We call this meeting the Osceulus City Council Order. Today is Monday, April 4th, 2016. Let's start with the invocation. Heavenly Fathers, we assemble here tonight. We thank you for the blessing of the people in this room. We have all felt your call to be part of the future of Osceulus and acknowledge the need for your guidance. For the council members and staff here, we ask that you bless us. Give us quiet and considerate attitudes, well thought out deliberations, and ultimately decisions that are best for the long-term future of the city of Osceulus. We thank you for those in the audience here and watching on the broadcast. We thank you for leaders of businesses and organizations who have the vision and commitment to help the city, the council's volunteers who are motivated to help, and for informed citizens who have given us the privilege of their trust and support. Tonight, we've assembled a group of people who are making a difference in the long-term future of Osceulus, so may the words of our mouths and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight. Amen. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council. We ask that statements be kept brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions you have that are to be asked of the city staff or the council members or the mayor, we ask that you ask them prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and the city council only, as to anyone who would like to speak at this time. Yes, sir.
My name is Jerry Bottenfield. I live at 1, my wife, and I live at 105 Sheriff Avenue on the corner of Market and Sheriff. Before I get started, I would like to say one thing to the council. I've been to some council meetings in the past, and my impression is all you hear from us are bad comments or concerns and gripes. I want to rest assured, have you rest assured that we appreciate your time. I know every meeting you've got 20 things on your plate to consider. That takes a lot of time and effort. I think you do a good job at that, and in the previous meeting, I was impressed at how intent everybody was while that meeting was going on. So, now that I've told you I love you, I'd like to bring a serious matter to the council. Two weeks ago, at the city council meeting, we had a discussion, or I brought up some comments about the Sheriff Avenue being replaced and a sidewalk being built beside it. During that discussion, a council member said that all the residents along Sheriff were in favor of that project. And I kind of doubted that, so I decided to find out for myself. I drafted a petition to circulate to the residents around Sheriff. That petition reads, "We, the undersigned residents of Osceulus, Iowa, oppose the construction and installation of a sidewalk along Sheriff Avenue until further notice from us because there is little or no pedestrian traffic in the area and can only allow pedestrians to access traffic on Highway 63, thereby creating a safety hazard." I walked that around to all the people who own property adjacent to Sheriff Avenue, and guess what? I got every one of them to sign to the fact they opposed it. It's contrary to what you heard two weeks ago. Rather than just tell you about it, I've run a copy of that, so you can see who signed that. A similar, but second item is during that meeting, you were informed that all the residents on both sides of Sheriff had been duly notified of the project by the city. I doubted that, too, because I wasn't contacted, so I drafted another little petition. It read, "We, the undersized residents along Sheriff Avenue, were never notified verbally or in writing of the city's intention to install a sidewalk and replace Sheriff Avenue." And guess what? Everybody on both sides of Sheriff signed this thing. That's conflict to what you heard two weeks ago.
Thank you, everybody on this one. I got to speak here. So, the three minutes is up, Jerry, so if you have any concluding comments.
I decided to present these to the council for a number of reasons, but first of all, I wanted to have proof positive, not just words from my mouth, proof positive that you had been misled two weeks ago. That type of thing is not conducive for developing good relationship with your constituency. You need to develop trust. This doesn't do it. I gave each of you one a copy, so you would see I have proof of what I claim. I gave one to the city clerk with the hopes that that would be put on file, and one to the Herald representative here, hoping that we can enlist the power of the press to inform our public of the character of our government right now. I think this is serious, folks. I hope you do, too. Thank you for your time and attention.
Is there anyone else who cares to speak at this time? Anything done, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is all items that are routine in nature, not a lot of discussions anticipated. Didn't want to draw the council's attention. Item F, where we include the resolution adopting the proposed 2015-2016 special amendment and sets a date for a public hearing on May 2nd. Also, item J, that's the resolution approving the 2018 agreement for law enforcement services with the Osceulus Police Department and Marion County Sheriff's Department. And then also, item L, it's a resolution scheduling a public hearing on vacation sale of the 60-foot-by-16-and-a-half-foot section that's an east-west alley adjacent to 402, Fourth Avenue West, but it also refers to the matter over the planning of zoning commission. Do we have a motion?
No.
Second.
Okay.
I got a couple questions. On item H, is that an emergency, like we need to figure out a way to get it done?
This has to do with a generator for the northeast Lake Water Creek project?
No, this is going to schedule a project.
Okay. So, what I read is, you know, the urgency was in there about, you know, you wouldn't want this to not have a generator. I just want to be sure.
That's what I'm saying. I was questioning my $30,000. I was like, what is this? Just having a generator. Something like that here.
Excuse me, old Tom?
Uh, I don't, I... This is just about the change in the amount.
So, this is the payment of $71,000 to Exodus Excavating for the fire station sanitary sewer project?
But as I understand it, if I tell you if I'm right, this part was not in the fire station.
It was specifically removed from that fire station.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Thing that passes. Item 6 is the announcement of vacancies that we have for various boards and commissions. First is the Airport Commission. We have one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term that ends on December 31st of 2021. The five-member board typically meets on the first Monday of the month, and we have four males and a female serving. There's one vacancy. Historic Preservation Commission, three vacancies. One vacancy to fill upon appointment of a term that ends December 31st of 2018, and two vacancies for alternate members. It's a seven-member board with two alternate members that meets as needed. Currently, four males and two females serving with three vacancies, two for alternate members. Municipal Housing Agency, there's one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending February 28th, 2017. It's a five-member board that meets quarterly. Currently, two males and two females serving, one vacancy. On the Water Board, two vacancies for six-year terms. They begin on July 1, 2016, ending on June 30 of 2022. It's a five-member board typically meeting on the third Monday of the month. Currently, we have five males serving. Into the regular agenda, item 7A, it's a public hearing. Consider a resolution leving a special assessment against private property for nuisance abatement. So, in the explanation, it's time for the public hearing leving the assessment against property owned by Daniel V. Dowerty Revocable Trust and Kenneth W. Jones located at 215 Rock Island, Osceulus, Iowa, for the removal of an unsafe tree. A certified notice of the hearing was sent to the property owner and notes that the hearing was published in the Osceulus Herald prior to the public hearing date. If approved, the property owner has 30 days to pay for the tree removal in the city clerk's office. After the 30 days, it will be assessed to their property taxes with a payment schedule, 15 years at 9% interest. Staff is recommending opening up the hearing and receiving any comments, both the hearing and approved the resolution. I'll open the public hearing at this time, so anyone who would care to speak to us. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I assume we don't have any written comments. So, do we have a motion supporting this? Okay.
I got a question. What's this been?
Yeah, we talked about it.
But is something changed?
Mayor has to go through the air and how we went about recording the session. We had to start the process over for...
Okay, that's, that's...
Right. Because of the initial, the address, so it was, we were advised to start it all over from the beginning, and the beginning to the end is not one.
But it is the same tree?
It is the same tree. It is.
The property owner who has to be, has to be the person paid upon it, we would say where the tree was actually removed and assessed.
So, we start from the very beginning, and it takes four months.
It did look right, but he came in after we cut the tree down and thought he could get it done. Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments? Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Thing that passes. Item B is another public hearing. This is the time and place for the hearing on the proposition. The issue does not exceed $1.8 million of general obligation refunding capital loan notes. This pays the costs of refunding the general obligation capital loan notes from Series 2008-A dated on May 1st of 2008. The approximate savings on interest costs, depending, of course, on rates, is around $125,000. So, I'll open the public hearing at this time, so anyone who cares to speak to us. Or dare to speak, thanks. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion supporting this? Okay. Any discussion?
Just a question. So, we've saved $100,000, roughly, $25,000. Is there a cost to the revision? What's the net savings?
That wouldn't be the net savings.
That's the net savings.
That's what they were estimating when we first started the process, obviously due to change of the interest rate.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Thing that passes. This is a resolution approving electronic bidding procedures and distribution of the preliminary official statement. So, the city of Osceulus is in need of funds to call in the 2008 general obligation notes we just talked about. Public financial management has provided a recommendation that electronic bidding procedures be utilized for this refunding note sales. Based on the recommendation, the Iowa Code requires that the council make a finding that the recommended procedure will provide reasonable security and maintain the integrity of the competitive bidding process and facilitate the delivery of bids by interested parties under the circumstances of a particular sale. And so, in our council package, it's a draft of the preliminary official statement for the city of Osceulus. Approval of the resolution authorizes its distribution with respect to the above referenced issues. And there's probably about 25 or 30 or 40 pages of stuff here. Well, now that you ask, sure, why not? My understanding is there's no important basketball game tonight, you think? So, is there anyone who would support this revolution going with the electronic bidding procedures? Second. Any questions, discussion?
How was it done previously?
The same, in the same manner.
But not electronically, right?
Yes.
Oh.
But we're required on each new issue to go through the same procedure. Recommendation has stayed the same one given. They have not issued a new letter, but because of new issuance, we have to give approval from the county.
Eric Cotten? Thank you.
Way back when it was all in hand written.
That's right. But you know...
Yeah, way back when. But yeah, it would have been...
Thank you.
So, then, if you're an outfit that wants to bid on these things, would you be receiving, like, a link from PFM that says, "Go to a website," and all this stuff could be downloaded there, or is it actually emailed as a file?
I believe that all this information is the link that they can go to.
Okay. Everybody sees the same stuff?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Percy?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D, consider a request to direct staff on the study establishment of the loading and unloading only parking area on Market Street. Council members Percy and Walling are requesting city staff study and develop a recommendation on establishment of a loading and unloading loading parking area on Market Street by taking the alley space in front of the alley between Brightle Greens and Smoky Grove and one of the parking spaces either north or south of the alley space and make them delivery parking only. Let's see. Councilmember Percy or Walling, do you have any additional comments on that?
The only reason I brought this up was after I left the screening, I was asked by a gentleman who might have already known on his side. And I made this for safety because of mainly UPS. He uses that alley, he's going to back into it, and we make it deliver to Brightle Greens and not living in that section. Tom Walling brought it up, too, that is a highway there. And my 47 years in UPS, I know if there's an accident there because he's parked there, another part out in the street, that drives a little recharge in the accident, I'd almost be there. FedEx, I looked at them, too, and they're about the same. I think if we could just take that alley and have it parked in place and take the one in front of them, my recommendation would be to put Brightle Greens in that spot, so we can just pull in there, make some deliveries, FedEx can do the same thing. I know we can't help the truck or trailer drivers, but we can help the smaller trucks and the drivers over there. I think there should be a study of that.
Since it's a study, they need to study which spots. And I think they should survey, you know, I put UPS driver on the spot, I shouldn't have, because he's not making the rules.
That's why he was here.
Yeah, right. But, you know, and talk to UPS, FedEx, you know, and see what their rules are.
They've only given up only one parking place and they need a safety, I think it's a good thing to do. I wasn't objecting to leave what was going on in the alley. If there was a time of all deliveries on that street, that'd be done, you know, all of them. That was back in the 60s, before some of your time, I'm sure. I just think it's...
I just think it's still delivering the alley, you know? Can't they still deliver?
No, that one is closed.
Not that.
The alley knows from the south is closed. Close on the land.
They're restricted.
Right after that, after that, yeah.
They're back in, you know, better. The money's back in on grand, and more, back down.
I just think it's... I just think it's...
And this is for a study.
This is for a study, yeah.
Any other comments from council members?
In my past life before I was in Osceulus, I was in retail for 30 years and had stores in downtown Kansas City, downtown Minneapolis, and we'd kill to be able to back down an alley that close to a store if you had to go across the street. Quite frankly, the UPS or Federal Express, no due respect here, out in the real world, this is being done every day outside of Osceulus. I'm not saying it's right, but they've seen us being done for years and years and years without any issues, so in much busier locations, even though that's a highway, so I don't see it as any much different than what's going on in other parts of the world. You have some comments, but...
Anyone else?
And I want to make sure I understand, so we have a UPS driver and we have a FedEx driver, and they each make a delivery, and they stop there, and they deliver to whoever they own in that area, and they leave, so we're going to dedicate these spaces 24 hours a day for maybe one hour of delivery service a day, is what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Usually, you've got a time limit on it.
Yeah, it's not a time limit, you have time, not 24 hours a day. No. You have time on it.
There'd be a time limit...
But you'd have to be actually delivered, because you have to deliver in the park.
There'd be a time limit on how long you can park there, and a time limit of when that spot is a delivery spot.
Well, that's where I didn't expect it to be, yeah, so that's where I talked about it, that it was devoted to parking for those guys 24 hours a day, so...
Well, he's going back, like, that was 24, so it's 8:00, 5:00, whatever.
It's not a schedule. Somebody's going to park there, and then it repeats the purpose there.
Robert's rules being what they are, we need to have a motion first regarding to do the study. It may be a assumption there that Tom would be wanting to do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I, for clarification, you're moving to approve one exactly. Is there a specific spot that you want us to study, or do you want to just study the area that I've outlined in this map? Just, I just want to make sure that I did.
I would say it was the area that I've outlined in the map, but it has to be an area adjacent to the alley, you know? So, the alley truck can pull in there and pull back out of it.
And you're going to study each area for what?
What we as staff would do in this instance is simply send out a survey, see if the property owners would support walking off one of the parking spaces in front of their business, in front of Brightle Greens or in front of Smoky Grove, or a loading area. I don't know that at this point we recommend, and maybe this is where it might disappear. The space that is serving the alley is a crosswalk, so we're not, we wouldn't necessarily look at that as a space for loading. It's definitely your traffic. Unless your council said, you know, you'll want that, but I think logically, a lot of people use that as a little lot of cost.
Okay, so then it would be confined to just a parking space?
One of the two, north or south, if that's where you want it.
Maybe we pull into that space to park.
Yeah. Yeah, it'd be either north or south.
Right.
Any further questions or clarification?
And I don't know how to do this exactly, but do you want to know the health perspective of this to back down that alley? I mean, is it wide enough? I mean, are we... There's some comments that it's telling me that they would move it back down that alley.
We wouldn't back down that alley anyway. That would catch them.
No, I mean, you have the other, if you're back down the north-south alley.
North-south. Get the survey, like I said already, I'll mention the Derby powers, then they should be asked, and then ring reviews should be asked, their home offices, you know, what kind of limitations they're putting on their driver from a safety standpoint. If they say none, they can bring that back to us.
And we're not, you know, making a study on the study.
Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Burnett?
No.
Call Jure?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes. Okay, item 5, two, a pass. Moving on, item 8, this is the end of the meeting here. Reports on items from the city staff, city members or anything?
I, yes, Mayor, handed out a document to the council before the meeting started, which was in a memo format, and I've outlined a few items that I'd like to receive some feedback on, but it shouldn't be now, but in the past, we've had conversations about topics in study session format only. That was a practice that basically started here about four years ago. And that was because the committee process didn't seem to be effective, effective in representing what either the council involved from the side. And so, I guess I'm looking for some feedback, and is whether or not you'd like to re-institute the use of committees. If not, that's fine, we can schedule a study session, but I need some feedback as to what you'd like to do. So, if you could, just let me know, that would be great.
Individually, or by, by, or the whole list?
The whole list, if you would, I would think. I just, I don't even necessarily care about the list, I guess it's more of a concept of do we want to start using as a group committees or just study sessions? We can use both, but we've gone away from the study, the committee group. The second option, or the second item I have is an update on a discussion during the study session, the last meeting, about Sheriff Avenue, and I've indicated to all of you that based on the comments I would receive from council and from the public, that we were going to be looking at other options to present to the city council in a future study session, so sometime in May, and just work, we'll look at it. Presumably, it was to be an effort just to do maintenance work on the east and the west side of Sheriff. No additional reconstruction, no sidewalks, east-west, and then see what you thought about that. That basically would leave the middle of the road to be patched with a cool patch of mazening and resists, and the road would be reprogrammed for the reconstruction whenever the council would see fit. As you know, the project isn't set to take place until fiscal year 18. We don't typically have a public input process or a public meeting until the project is closer to construction, and so this, what we did with the study session, the newer, is renewing the complete street policy, and so the narrowing of the road was what we're working at. US Council, we of the city, already have a policy in place, about years ago, about automatically through sidewalks and reconstruction projects, so... And so this, what we did with the study session, the newer, is reviewing the complete street policy, and so the narrowing of the road was under what the US Council, we as a city, already have a policy in place, Dr. Beersville, about automatic entry sidewalks and reconstruction projects. So I just want to give that update, that there will be a study session within the next year, presumably, that we would discuss the maintenance option once we have the cost assessment put together. We were planning on mailing letters out to the residents to let them know that that study session was going to be staged.
What about the continuing of that sidewalk, do you have to do that down the trail, is that a lead in the plan?
We may have discussions about that, I don't know, it just, it may be cost prohibitive, but we want to open that. Again, if the council says no, they don't, you know, the group don't want to program that road and spend half a million dollars on it, and you want to spend that for those funds elsewhere, that's part of that discussion, so. The north-south sidewalk from the high school, we obviously wanted to pay for that with a grant and then the cost of room there, we took that out, it's still a priority to get that done, it's just a matter of which fund is sourced and where, when, if that's right. That's all I have.
What questions, ten minutes of last meeting, all that discussion on that project, the complete streets, I guess, don't see nothing, that they don't look back to you, will they, take those or anything?
No, and honestly, we just take summary minutes, we'll say we discussed and we'll reference documents, I know the time that we started, who was there, and if we talked about projects now, including project documents.
I was going to bring it up on my side, but you're talking, but, so Jerry in the neighborhood understands, you tell me if you think, let me know if I'm saying this right, well, we changed our procedure, do you remember? We decided somewhat collectively that instead of sending it to P and Z first, we wanted to come here, we look at it, say, yep, we agree with it, then it goes to P and Z. And then Jerry, you would get your public, your first public notice to come for a public hearing from P and Z, and then it would come back to us again and you'd have another public hearing at that time, right?
So we're called P and Z, and I don't know if planning and zoning was involved in that, I strongly remember that.
Well, wherever we go, it's going someplace.
Come here and then go back to the plan, or like Kielish, and then back here, and then we're all back after that.
So that when the complete streets program was adopted, there were concerns that it was just going to cost an exorbitant amount to introduce those planning concepts into our design, which we already do. And so we wanted to, as a group, meet first, talk about it before either staff or our engineers started the design work.
Okay, so I was appalled, but what I'm trying to get, then the, and they would have got their votes and they would have had a public hearing to come to, we're just way ahead of that, because of talking about the complete streets, for us to try to be on the same page.
There would have been an opportunity for the council to approve the plan in respect, which would be the design of the project, that's typically what we do before we let it. They, as homeowners, wouldn't necessarily get a specific notice at that point, but however, the Kielish will hold pre-destruction meeting with the residents, talk about the project, if it's going to impact the trash, if it's going to impact the right of way, you know, whether you need additional maintenance or anything like that.
And I remember getting public input, what about the hospital, when we did the post, right?
There was a public notice posted in the hospital, whereas this one, there was, on the way it was presented, the way it went, part of the project.
But that happened right before we were ready to build, and we aren't ready to build now for two years, originally.
So before we finished designing, again, we wanted to show the council the cost of it, we implemented the complete streets design, which we're a part of. Typically, we would just, as staff, you would say, okay, we talked about the projects during the budget, there is an opportunity for public to give input there, we'll have a hearing on the budget, that's an additional opportunity to input there, and then once you as council approve that, we as staff start putting together the design documents, or we bring an item to you to approve a design contract, in this case, we did that with Garden Associates, that was done publicly. And then after we've coordinated with Garden Associates, we now come back and the additional step, review the design concept. Once that's done, we finish up the design, then we come back to you again. And so there are a number of opportunities, it's lengthened the process, we've basically added two more meetings, I would say, with council to get input.
Which should make more transparency, exposure, but somehow it doesn't sound like it.
Well, I think it did exactly what we intended to do. More of a Doug's question, was this is just a design meeting, they have garden designs, we aren't really doing anything yet.
Well, that's why I wanted Jerry and the group to understand, they weren't left out yet, they weren't that far along, but I'm not getting that.
I agree, they went off that town, it's just preliminary stuff that we're doing.
Well, I think they were left out. Yes, they were, whether it's preliminary or not, if you're in a foot sidewalk where none have ever been, and you've got people living on that street, who've been there for twenty, thirty, forty years, I think they should know this is something that we're talking about, whether it's in the preliminary plans or whether we're actually going to do it in three or four years.
I agree, but we weren't to that step yet, was the point I was trying to make there. It was a, it was a work session for us to talk about it, it wasn't a hidden thing, it was on TV, but they weren't notified because we weren't ready to make that step, is what I see it, I'm wrong, just tell me I'm wrong.
And I think from my, for me to you, what I like to do is maybe take some time with the staff and review a file, and put the other timeline in writing so that you can see. It's my understanding there had been some public interaction, and I'd like to understand what that was, and I'll get back to you in the moment, we submitted as part of the council package for the next meeting.
And that's the second part of Jerry's question, but I was just trying to clarify the first part, or the first division.
I mean, I think it's, as already pointed out, a very serious issue, integrity of our government is called the question, right?
Yes, yes, sure.
And so I think we need to go back and figure out what happened, and I don't think any of us, like our reputations, talent, have made a mistake in going after that, and...
Anything else, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, city clerk, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, so, moving on, an opportunity for council information, reports from council members, this is when we, once a quarter, talk about the various boards and commissions that we've been appointed to. Aspen County Council's board, that's the one that I appointed myself to, more or less, all the mayors and cities in the county are appointed for that. It meets with the assessor's office, and so really the only activity in the last quarter was the approval of the budget, there's a real slight tax increase going on with that. I did want to let you know that when we look at properties that we're considering, a lot of times we use pictometry issue, images for that, and pictometry folks have said that they've found the ability to take much greater detail with that, and so those images are going to get a lot better in the near future. So more of what we're paying for. Other than that, that was it for me, emergency nine-one-one, Tom?
Nothing new, but I did confirm with Amy at like, that, you know, you just approved the last payment of the old way, now that we've merged, there's a new way, and it's on your carry cash. So, other than that, no.
But you go get the thing.
Yeah.
Okay, how's it respond, Joe?
Nothing new.
Okay, Osceulusa area Chamber Development Group, Steve?
Well, they asked for some notes, the Chamber, so they just got that, it was a best of Osceulusa survey, they had two hundred and sixty responses, they're doing an announcement on the twenty-first, they announced who those folks were, that were the best of Osceulusa, or are the best of Osceulusa. They're also, the Chamber's also working with several businesses that are interested in opening in Osceulusa, and a couple of notes have been coming out, you've got the annual bank on May twelfth, and a golf tournament on May thirteenth. And then the MCDG group, they just recently had their annual legislative session at the Capitol, with success, they had the opportunity to meet with the IEDA director, Debbie Durham, and leadership from both the House and Senate. And of course, it sounds like MCDG, you've got some members that are pretty involved with the one in the Aspen group, which is continuing to educate the public about the block and sales tax coming up, hoping for a good turnout. Interesting, MCDG and cities involved with the Indian Hill Regional Development Group down in Anaville, they're looking at an impact study, they identified more than three hundred and forty million dollars in regional value, like for that center down there. And Pictorial received the invitation, but there's a presentation on Wednesday, April thirteenth at nine AM at the Indian Hill File Profs, so training tonight. Then lastly, MCDG's involved with the Changefranchis, which held a kickoff last month, this group formed out of a co-op working group and adapted it into an entrepreneurial networking and support group. Their hope is to host seminars and socials and other events throughout the year, so these folks are all working hard to make Osceulusa the best place.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Joy County, Mahasten, Zephyr Services, and Emergency Planning Administration, Tom?
We have none, that again, but they're doing a lot of meeting discussions, that's the interesting aspect.
Joint Law Enforcement, Aaron?
I didn't make the last meeting.
Mahasten County, you can see an agent?
Yes, on that one, we've been working with Dusty Williams for probably a year and a half now. And one of the things we do is we get what they call interns, community interns, colleagues, young people, I think they're getting college credit through this, and they help us do different programs and stuff, like the youth donation. It's very helpful, we've got a new one, her name is Sherry Boe, she's an Osceulusa resident, I don't know if I'm watching, but we're in gang students, and she's going to do a good job for us.
Last one, Mahasten Community Recreation Foundation, Scotty?
We have, I don't want to come out, but the complex is tuning up on there, you know, it's complicated, it's a lot to become, it's quite, Sherry, if they want to meet her, that's the only thing that's going on, but we haven't met, but she came to bring them in to us, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I just would say, one of the MCRs was really lovely, she gives some help with the roads down there, we can do that as well. And then I saw somewhere, something about a study for hotel hotels across the area, and that's something that MCRs here are quite frequent, like, that people that are bringing groups and tournaments wish that there was more hotels, whatever, available in our area, if you bring some of the, I think, to the community. Jerry, do you want to add something about here, though?
You did very well, we're meeting again tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Last thing, anything from individual council members, tell us, Joe?
Something I'd like to bring up is the Mahasten County Outreach, which I'm not on their board, they give back to the community, like, last year, for example, they gave fifteen thousand dollars back to the community, this is the first step. And what they give, they give back to organizations that are Osceulusa, that are by one, three, two, I think, is that right? Nonprofit, and one of them is the agency on A T, we got an over eleven hundred dollars from them, just through bank sales. The reason I'm bringing this up is because I think they lose a lot of their customers because of parking, because we don't enforce the two-hour parking. And I think the courthouse is one of the meaningful pieces, and they have a courting station, a place to park that big block table, and I think a lot of the elderly citizens go to the end of the outreach because of it, that's one of the biggest complaints. And I would like to see us enforce, if that's fine, a two-hour parking, I'd like to see us park enforcement that one more time.
He's trying that done.
There you go, thank you, that's one that.
I guess the only comment I would like to make, independent of the Sherrod Avenue project, I still want to just make sure I show my support for us continuing to look at opportunities to put in sidewalks in our city. I think it's a tremendous need that we have, and since I've been on council, I don't know that we've ever put in a sidewalk, well, there are plenty of specific residents that wanted it, but yet I hear from a lot of people that we want more sidewalks in our community. So, again, this project aside, it may not make sense there, and every one of them should be looked at, but I think in our city in general, I want to continue to look at opportunities where we can have sidewalks, and make it a much better city overall.
Tom?
I definitely agree with Doug with sidewalk issues, we need to keep looking at it. Michael, on your list, I think we should do them all, and it seems like we function better in a study group together than having a three-person committee and then coming back to the hotels, but that's just what I think about it.
I'm in full agreement with that.
And there's a rumor somebody's got a birthday this week.
Yes.
That's it.
Steve, anything?
Yeah, just, I took the opportunity, I reached out to a couple of folks in the community that were fairly vocal about their disappointment in city councils, I guess city government's inability to uphold folks to a standard when it comes to the way properties look. And so Mike and Mark Neff and Ethan, a couple of folks that I met, and one of the things that came out at meetings, besides the fact that they had a number of pictures wanting to show us how we can allow people to have their properties look the way they look, whether they were rental or, you know, homeowners. And one of the things that came out of it, though, was one of these ladies asked me, you know, our church group, I can put a church group together to go out, so asking Mark, if you were to visit one of these places, and these folks needed help, meaning whether it was to help clean up their yard, or to help load their yard, they need to do a little light hanging or something, I could put a church group together to come out and do that. And I thought that was a pretty good idea, so I drafted a letter and got ahold of the address of thirty-six churches in Osceulusa, and I'd like to send that letter out, in fact, I wasn't going to send the letter out, so Mike said, well, maybe you always like the council first. And get this thing off and going for when our folks are out there visiting these folks, it looks like we're not trying to be the mean folks on the block, we are going to increase the standards, or at least make this, and when I say that, we'll uphold the standards that are currently there with the codes and stuff, but offer them a way to help them where they may need help. And so, and I'd be glad to share the letter, read the letter, it's pretty short, whatever you wish, but I thought I'd just bring your attention, make sure it all in, and hurt it all that.
It's a great idea, because then go with church group, all the time, St. Louis, and Anon, now.
Right, why not, and our own back there, my daughter did it, and they called it, they'll turn to spring break, when you can call it, and they went to us, and we're on.
Some older people, or people on elders, like you're in Osceulusa, I love that idea.
One avenue, Steve, might be the area association of churches, that's kind of a way to touch them once and then they'll touch other churches, just an idea, because, you know, our church community is pretty great, and it's even like when we talk before cemetery, I hope they went back and looked, I think they should approach the churches to help with the cemetery problems, it just seems to be that's a match up, but yeah, it's the same.
Okay, Andrew? Are you going to go ahead and answer the question?
I'd like to, but I can't with the, with the...
Okay. All right.
Okay, I've got nothing else, then, do we have a motion for a jury?